Okay, I am going to open council time for Wednesday, July the 14th, 2021. Do we have an amendment to the agenda?
Chair Brian, this is Kathleen. I would like to request the council to consider amending the agenda to add the redistricting committee under old business.
Without objection, we will, we will add that item. Okay, let's start then with old business. I'd entertain a motion for the minutes of the last meeting, please. To approve? Actually, I'm sorry. I just want to, I did open the council time, but I just wanted to ask if we can have a moment of silence for Michael Wilson, a former Vancouver councilman who was killed last evening in an automobile accident. So just, just take a moment. Okay, I apologize for not saying that right away. Okay, old business, would somebody like to please make a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, motion passes. Moving to new business, the Purdue bankruptcy.
Actually, if I could do the old business first on the redistricting?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I just said, we can do it. I'm looking at this paper. I apologize.
So if you remember council, probably just over a month ago, we came to council time because there was a recently enacted state law. It was House Bill 5013 that requires the county to redistrict council district boundaries by the end of this year on December 31st. Per the county charter, the council shall appoint four persons to the committee, two from each major political party, from a list of five submitted by the party central committee. So what staff had done, and the council did approve a letter to be sent to the two major political parties in our community. The letter was sent. Both parties now have submitted a list of five members from their political party for this representation or consideration for representation. So for today's purpose, I would be looking to the council to see if you would like to accept or reject those five names that have been brought forward. And then if it is accepted, then we'll move into the next steps, which would be at a later council time to, for the council to determine the two that would be represented. So at this today is just really accepting or rejecting the nominations from the Democratic and the Republican parties.
Okay, so I just, I have a little something to say here. I understand and appreciate the time and effort that's been devoted to this project. But the Republican Party had no in-person, virtual, or hybrid central committee meeting. And that's really deprived the opportunity for a full and complete participation and vetting of the nominees. And I recommend that the Republican Party call a central committee meeting and redo the process. The chair of the party was notified by me on July 3rd that he had more additional time to call a meeting with the central committee and complete the nominating process. So there was no actual emergency. We've heard from the central committee members disturbed and unhappy about the timing and undemocratic way in which these nominees were nominated and selected. There was no opportunity for elected PCOs to nominate other Republicans qualified to serve on the redistricting committee, nor for them to question or familiarize themselves with the self-nominated candidates put forward. With that, I'm going to move that the nominees be sent back and ask for the chair of the Republican Party to call a central committee meeting to nominate and select five names to put forward to the council. The deadline for this process will be July the 28th, 2021, by 5:00 PM.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. I did want to make some comments myself, Madam Chair. You didn't ask for discussion, but...
I did. I did ask for discussion.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, you were too fast for me. So the charter itself is kind of somewhat vague on certain areas. And I think hopefully it won't be problematic, but as far as having two from each party, select a fifth without any process for a tie, or how that's going to occur, and then to select a consultant later on. There are some huge gaps in this, and this kind of caught us by surprise. At least it did for me. It came from the auditor to remind us of the legislation in place and the, and the very swift timeline that he wanted to see. Ultimately, I think our letter was really, really started the ball rolling. And by picking such a short timeline that I think number one, neither party really responded in a timely way. And then one party rushed through it, and it was all because of this inappropriate timeline. So I'm glad that we're redoing it. I think it is the business of the parties that we do not want to get into. But I think our initial letter was defective that caused this entire issue and consternation with at least one of the party's nominees that were teed up. So with that, I am joining in voting to send them back to allow them to redo the process in the spirit of full democracy for their PCO membership.
Other discussion? This is actually pertaining to the Republican Party. I've had no complaints of the Democrat Party selection. So this is, this is the Republican Party.
Yeah, Madam Chair, being the only member of the council who is not a member of the party under discussion here, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Madam Chair. Yes. I think certainly I have no visibility to what the, what the local party did in terms of selecting these candidates. And I think Counselor Medvedje, you said it. I don't know that we should get into the business of how the parties operate and present names. So given that, I don't, I guess I'll vote the way I vote, but I don't, I don't know that it's our role to get into how they operate their party business. So.
I'll just say that, just, this is, I actually feel like we, I've had so many complaints. There have been so much discussion that these are our constituents too. And I, I feel like it was a process that we need to remedy. And, and I would agree with Counselor Medvedje that we did have a very short deadline to begin with. And that probably created some of the problems. So with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion passes. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the nominations of the Democrat Party?
They're moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the five names from the Democrat Party. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a, I, maybe it's point of order. I'm not sure, but I presume that we will refrain from making selections from the lists until we have complete lists from both parties.
Yes. I would, yes, I would agree absolutely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. Opposed? Sorry. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on then to new business. 2.1, Purdue bankruptcy.
Good morning, counsel. Amanda Michael Brink with the prosecutor's office. And this matter is before you to vote on, as you know, we're involved in litigation over the opioid epidemic that has hit Clark County and many jurisdictions. And at this point, Purdue has declared bankruptcy. And part of the process with the litigation is for the jurisdictions to approve or, or reject the, the distribution of funds from Purdue to kind of mitigate some of the effects of that. And we are asking for your vote on either way for that bankruptcy distribution plan.
Okay. Is there, are there questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor Ross.
Amanda, I read through most of the documents that Kathleen sent, but just for purposes of discussion, can you just give some highlights as to the, excuse me, the distribution agreement? I know one of them was counties of over 400,000 would get a direct distribution rather than going through the state, if I read that correctly. If there are other sort of key points that you might want to...
Right. And there are some differences because of how the litigation is going in Washington versus in other jurisdictions, because the Attorney General's office is involved. It may not fully work out in that way for this specific thing, but that is what we're working on. And I, we did have discussion about this last week. So we would get a certain percentage of the money. The state would get a certain percentage. And that sort of thing, we would have to work out how that money would be coming in and what it would be used for. But that's further down the line. The concern here is if we, if there wasn't a consent for this distribution plan, then we would have to go individually, each jurisdiction would have to go individually to the bankruptcy. And the concern is that ultimately, we really wouldn't, we really wouldn't end up with anything because it would just go through the bankruptcy and there wouldn't be any money set aside for those purposes.
Okay, thanks so much. That, that helps clarify what we're doing today.
Okay, so are there any further questions for the council? And I'm assuming then that we need a motion to accept this, these distribution procedures for the, from the trust.
Is that correct? And I would include in the motion, delegating the signature to myself so that we can get this sent off today. There is a timeline.
Okay, thank you. I'd entertain a motion unless counselors have other questions.
Madam Chair, move to approve the National Opioid Abatement Trust Distribution Procedure and delegate the county manager to sign any necessary documents.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to distribute funds for the National Opioid Abatement Trust Distribution Procedures. Is there further discussion?
I have just one additional comment that I'd like to put on the record. So we haven't had any real statewide work on trying to have an alternative that would have a more direct distribution to individual counties instead of going directly to the state. So we really haven't had the opportunity for that. And I think it's perhaps partly timing or partly a lack of interest on the individual counties to kind of try to work together to come up with an alternative. So I'm somewhat disappointed in that, and I'm hopeful that ultimately the distribution is, is fair to each and every county, regardless of size.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Ross.
Yeah, only just, you know, the, I think Klar County was one of the first counties to file suit in this for this opioid epidemic situation that we've been in over the last number of decades. And, and you know, we're not completely through this yet, but at least this is something. And I hope, to Counselor Medvedje's point, we get a reasonable distribution so that we can help address the damage that this, that this opioid crisis has done in our community. And, and I just really did want to point out that we were one of the first ones in recognizing the critical nature of this and the, and the need for the, for some additional funds to help mitigate the damage to our community, to our families.
Chair.
Chair.
Counselor. Yes, to also add on, I think I'm, as we, as we look at this, this settling out, it's somewhat disappointing on a, on a large scale to have an actor that performed so many bad actions and did so much harm to so many people over so many years. End up being just a small percentage of what the damage actually was. However, taking this course of action does make us more likely to get something for the community. Yeah, I find it personally pretty difficult that a lot of the people who were so badly harmed over so many years are really not going to see any of this. But we may be able to use some of the funds that eventually do come through to help those, you know, those who are here now and who are struggling and those who are coming, coming along. So I also am optimistic that when funds do come through at the state level and at the local level, those will be put directly into treatment so that we can be sure to help the folks who really need the help, who have been so badly harmed here. Yeah, that's my thought.
Other comments? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number two under old business, public meetings.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Previously, we had conversations at council time regarding a hybrid approach on the council or staff presenting at future council meetings with the anticipation that the governor might change some of the restrictions with regards to OPMA. So the governor has provided some updates to OPMA. We are still required to provide a virtual or remote access for the public, which we will continue doing through the WebEx and phone numbers that we're doing as of today. But the other thing that has changed is providing an option to the council to allow public to come in for meetings. So this is, if, if we had no restrictions, we would be required to allow public to come in. And part of our last conversation was when they were to come back, we would still maintain some social distancing in the hearing room. But right now, the, the interim before we're fully open for the governor's guidance is that if the council chooses to allow the public in to attend in person at a public meeting, you do have that choice. I would recommend if this is something the council wants to move forward with, that we look at the hybrid for both staff and council to be effective on the same date. And I would look at recommending like the first of August, but we, you certainly can make the decision to keep doing the meetings as we have been. Another notable item is that LNI guidance that provides our regulations on how we operate in, as an employer. They still do require masks if for individuals who have not been vaccinated. And then staff have to attest or show proof, like a copy of their vaccination card in order to take their mask off in the building. So it would be an expectation that community members who come in, if they are not vaccinated, they would also need to continue to wear masks per the, the current regulations set by the state. So I just wanted to bring this to council's agenda or to your, for your consideration today. Again, you can certainly continue meetings as we have been until restrictions are lifted or review it again at a, a date certain in the future. Or you can choose to allow public meetings for all of our public meetings, which would be council time, Board of Health, and council meetings. Or you could even restrict and say, we only want to do it for one or two meetings and then also a date. So I would entertain your conversation, and we will support the council in whatever decision you would like to make.
Okay, I'll open it up for the council to speak to this. Comments?
I do have clarification, but I can pause.
Okay, Counselor Brown.
Just a question with regard to the public, which I certainly do support their opportunity for hybrid access to the council. When they choose to come into the building unmasked, and they indicate that, sure, they're, they're vaccinated, or they prefer not to say, how is that handled? Is it, is there any question, questioning or proof required? What, what are the guidelines imposed on us in that regard?
Sure. So what we're currently doing is we have to have a notification assigned downstairs where they come into the building stating, if you are not vaccinated, that you must wear a mask. We do not have measures in place to ask specific questions. And I would be reluctant to do so because it could easily turn into a HIPAA conversation, and we don't want to put anybody in that position. So we are providing that notice to the public, but we are not actively asking to see proof of vaccinations from the public.
That answer your question?
Yes, it does. I, I think that is something that is of concern to the public, and I appreciate your response.
Counselor Medvedje.
Yeah, I had essentially the same question, but so I'll skip that one. Thank you, Karen, for putting it out there to begin with. When I was told that to go into work time to document that I had been vaccinated so we wouldn't get in trouble with LNI, I could not, never find a location to do that. I did fill out a piece of paper, a hard copy, and submitted it. And I'm, I'm assuming that complies with LNI's requirements because I would like to come into the building without a mask, having been fully vaccinated.
Yes, that does, like I said, employees can fill out and attest that they have been vaccinated or actually provide a copy of the card. So we have to have that because LNI does have in the regulations that as the employer, if they come and ask for a record, that we need to be able to provide that. So a lot of employees had used our workday system. It was a one-time question in the system. But so yes, that would be in compliance with the LNI guidelines as an employee.
Okay, so my only comment then and, and preference is, one, I want to open it up so as quickly as we can in a pragmatic and ordered way. And so the hybrid model sounds like a good way to go. I think we're going to get complaints, no matter what we do. You know, we're going to get complaints that we're not looking at medical records to confirm vaccinations. We're going to get complaints if we did ask for proof. But I, you know, especially with the Board of Health, we've had a lot of people saying, please open it up. We want to come in person. We have a lot of important committee work to do with the Equestrian Committee, Committees and Camp Bonneville and the ongoing work with Heritage. You know, I, so I just, as much as we can get back to normal as quickly as we can. So I would support the hybrid model, Kathleen, that you've presented to us.
Other comments by the counselors? Okay, I would support a hybrid model. I would suggest that we do, we start it August the 1st. And so I'll just put that out there. See what you other counselors have to say.
Kathleen, Madam Chair. Kathleen, you sent this to us via email, but just, you know, for purposes of those who might be listening, could you just kind of walk through briefly what the hybrid model might look like if we went that way?
Certainly. So again, what is currently required by the state is that we continue the remote access. So what we're currently doing now so that members of the community can still call in by phone or through their computer and be able to listen to the full conversation and have an opportunity to provide testimony. So that, in council meetings, of course, there's not public testimony in our other public meetings. So that is, we at a minimum have to keep doing that, and we will. The part that's optional and kind of, I guess, the hybrid model would be continuing that mandatory way of accessing the meetings that's required. In addition, it would be allowing the public to come in in person and maintain some social distancing that we had mentioned before within, in the hearing rooms, that they could come in and listen and also provide public testimony when allowed in person. So the hybrid would, you know, is, is really a combination then for everybody who's involved at these meetings, whether it's the council attendance, what could you could choose to keep attending through WebEx or come in in person. Staff presenting would have the same option as well, that they could present in person or through the WebEx. And then this would allow the community members to either come in in person or continue participating through WebEx.
Okay, so either, so both with the public that wants to attend in person in the council chambers, and the council can be either in person or remote?
Yes.
Other questions?
A general comment and a question. I'm supportive of the hybrid model. I think it would be good to start working back toward in-person meetings to the extent we can. I have some concern about that, that lack of verification for members of the public who may or may not be vaccinated. And it does, it goes, it goes both ways. I, I would agree that asking for verification at the door is a level to which we're not only not prepared to go to, but that we shouldn't. But there is still the highly contagious variant out there. And we have heard directly from many people who are opposed to vaccines and opposed to masks. And while we should hear from them, they have every right to come to meetings and to, to testify in the interest of staff, health and safety, and other members of the public. I would be interested in pursuing something that we've seen some businesses choose to do, which is for the sake of not having to check, anybody coming in from the public needs to keep a mask on. So there are, there are businesses, coffee shops, other places that have said we are going to be slightly more restrictive. And while I know that there are a lot of folks who want to get out of the mask as well, I think that during this time when there is still a risky variant out there, that would be an option that we look at. And if this council doesn't go in that direction, I would hope that if we do see case counts rise or we do see problems with, with, with folks, that we would be able to reconsider that.
Madam Chair.
Counselor.
Kathleen, you made, is that current CDC guidance that if you're unvaccinated, that you wear a mask? Is, is that consistent with the current guidance? Do we know?
I'll have to look at the, I believe it is, but it is definitely a guidance and thing we need to follow with regards to the state and labor and industry. So that, that is, but I believe, I mean, I know that they look at CDC and a lot of times they are in line, but I'd have to double check on the CDC, but it is a requirement of the state at this time.
Okay, so, so in our building then, it would be the same. So if you're unvaccinated, you're going to be asked to, to wear a mask. We're not going to check your vaccination status, but we're going to, but it's an honor system for those coming into, let's say, a council meeting?
For, yes, for the community members, it is on the honor system. For employees, they are required to fill something out to show that they are vaccinated so that we can produce that information if LNI asks for it.
Okay.
Yeah, so if I may, Madam Chair, that, you know, with the option, with people knowing that we're not checking, and with the option of still being able to log in virtually, I think we've satisfied all issues. I, I do not want to mandate masks in the building when CDC and, and vaccinations have been rolled out. I, so I, you know, I would agree with Counselor Lentz that if, if we get into dire circumstances again, that perhaps we'll reconsider that decision. But I'd like to start continually moving towards normalcy as much as we can. And I think the hybrid model as proposed accommodates all parties. So if you're not happy about the fact that we're not checking at the door, then virtually sign in and don't come in person.
Well said, Counselor Medvedje. Is there, would somebody like to make a motion to that effect then? That we do the hybrid measure that we were, were required right now to, to hold remote or have remote access by the state, and we're doing that. And that we'd like to have a hybrid model and allow the public to come in. And, or those who are either of the public, the council, or the staff, or the staff need or would be required to be remote, we would allow that as well. And I guess a date certain would also be good. So I, if somebody would like to make a motion, I'd.
I'll make a motion to adopt that plan as proposed by the county manager.
Is that by August 1?
Yeah, is that August 1st?
And I'll second that motion.
All right. I didn't actually hear anything from the, from Counselor Madhvi on the motion about August 1st.
Oh, yeah, well, that was a date proposed by Kathleen, so I was endorsing that, yes.
Okay, all right. It's been moved and seconded to have a hybrid method of meetings for the council. And I'm assuming this is all meetings, all public meetings?
It would be, yes, so, well, that's up to you, but.
That's what I was, is, so I guess I'm asking that question of Counselor Madhvi.
Yeah, and again, if we start seeing huge crowds and we're in a little work session and it's not working out, we may have to adjust that. But I would not limit it to any particular meetings at this point.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Counselor Lentz.
Yes, I, I am going to support this motion, but I am also going to say once again for the record that I believe that the more responsible course of action would be to require masks of all visitors who are not employees of the county and have to go through the verification process. However, in the interest of opening up, I will cautiously support it. And should we see any problems or continuing case counts rise, look to revisit this decision.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
And I will work with Communications to get a statement out to the community to let them know that effective August 1st, so it would be the August 3rd meeting would be our first meeting. So we'll get that information out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, councillor reports. Any work session requests? Don't see any.
There are no work session requests this week.
Okay. Does Lindsay have any report? Excuse me?
No, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I was wrestling with my mute button. I did actually have a brief councillor report.
All right.
Clicking and I was like, it wasn't doing it. Just last night, we had C-Trans and just wanted to say that it was a, it was a good meeting and there's really great stuff happening at C-Trans. The bus rapid transit for Millplain continues to move along. They just got a critical easement agreement with, with Clark College for the terminus out at 192nd for that. And we also did the, did the CEO review for CEO Sean Donaghy, who once again got, you know, passed with flying colors, doing a great job for C-Trans and just wanted to say thanks to him for that.
And since she opened the, I do have a short councillor report as well. Thank you. And Karen Berman may want to add to it, but we had another joint meeting. We had back-to-back joint meetings of Vancouver and Clark County's Homeless Committee. So the, the main takeaways, we had a presentation by a couple of groups and really the amount of effort in outreach into the, not only Vancouver city area, but in the unincorporated area is going to be ramped up with mobile teams working in conjunction with law enforcement as, to really have the response by the team that will best connect with the homeless populations. So there's an enormous effort out there and a ramping up of contacts out in the community that hopefully will have a positive impact in actually assisting people out of homelessness, not just making it easier to take. So that's occurring. We also did agree that we should include a small city representative. So we're going to open that invitation out. We had some interest by Battleground particularly in participating. And also too, with lived experience, we're starting to look for those good candidates to also round out this joint committee. So a lot of great work is occurring on behalf of the county as well as the city. And hopefully we'll start to see some real dividends in the near future.
Okay, as long as we're in councillor reports, any other councillor reports at this time? Okay, do we have any policy issues to discuss, Lindsay? Okay, we are going to go into executive session. For one potential litigation, RCW 4231101I for 10 minutes. One pending litigation, RCW 4231101I for 15 minutes. Two pending litigations, RCW 4231101I for 20 minutes, with possible action afterwards. The total of that, I hadn't actually totaled it yet. 45 minutes, am I right? 10, 35, 45, 55? Is it 55? Sorry, 20, 10 and 15.
It's 40, 45 minutes.
45, okay, sorry. Okay, possible action afterwards. So we'll leave this meeting and go to our executive session. Thank you all.
And I would let the community know or staff that the work session will start after executive session. Thanks.
I'm going to come back into council time. We've exited our executive session and we have some action items. I would ask councillor Lentz to make the first motion.
I move to approve the proposed settlement and release agreement relating to the lawsuit filed by Stephen Klug on November 1st, 2019 and authorize the county manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to have the county manager sign the settlement agreement. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Madhvi, did you have a motion for us?
Yes, thank you. There's another settlement and release agreement. And I move to approve relating to the complaint filed by Elizabeth Halterm on or about the 8th of May, 2020 and to authorize the county manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the county manager to sign the settlement, the above-mentioned settlement. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are going to take a five-minute break before we begin our work session. So that will put us at just about 10:17. See you then.